When you decide you have a question, you have to have a raffle ticket. And again, the reason we're doing that is to verify that you are a Saraville resident and that you do have voting authority in the town to ask those questions because we do want to give priority and give our local Saraville community the chance to raise their question and really to hear from the candidates. I will say I have two kids in the school system, so I want to thank each one of you tonight, our candidates for volunteering. It is a volunteer gig. Let me remind the group, it's wonderful that we have so many distinguished candidates who volunteer to do this. I have nothing but respect for you guys. But it is an education and a township that many of you here tonight, I'm sure, is really, really proud of, right? And I myself have my kids in the district, so it's near and dear to my heart and the hearts of those who are here tonight. I will allow, so we have from left to right Lucy Bloom. Again, each of them will have their own opening statement. A left, Golly, did I say that right? A tap, Golly, did I say that right?
Yes, correct.
Jacqueline.
The voice is not clear very, it's really.
All right, I'll try to speak up. That's just as Jacqueline Hedlund, Jeff Smith, Jessica Vance, and Kelly Wach-Guler. Did I say that right?
It's pretty good.
All right, very good. All right, so we will start with the opening statement for two minutes from each of you.
Does it come out? Is this a hard press? Oh, there we go. Is it on?
No, you gotta press the button.
You gotta press it, oh, here we go. Ah, I see a green light.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Is it clear?
Yes.
Okay, now I need to be able to see you. Ah, there you are. Okay, good evening. My name is Lucy Bloom. I am currently serving as the president of the Saraville Board of Education. I am in my fourth term on the board. Prior to that, I taught in this building for 19 years. I was a secondary art teacher. Prior to that, I was president of the teachers' union in this district. So I know from both sides, from the staff side and from the student side. I wanted to run for the Board of Education so that I could make a difference. And I also wanted the board to hear the whole story and the true story because it was my experience that sometimes that didn't happen. So as soon as I retired, I ran for the board. I was elected and I have been here ever since. I've also served as the president of Middlesex County School Boards Association. And I can tell you that in this county, our buildings are the safest. We have in place more protocol than any of your surrounding neighbors. We have done an excellent job of keeping the kids safe, and we want to continue to do that. We want to continue to improve their learning, provide them with many opportunities for extracurricular activities. I believe last night it was stated at the meeting we have over 100 extracurricular activities that the kids can get involved in to expand their social graces because we know a lot of them faltered during COVID. So that is why I'm here, to continue to do the job that we've started and have improved many things along the way. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. My name is Atif Gali and I'm originally a Coptic from Egypt, married and have a daughter. I have been a Saraville resident for 22 years and I have a small transportation business for 20 years. I have worked as a high school and middle school teacher for two years. I have worked also as a building maintenance for five years. I am proud to running for Saraville Board of Education because I believe our schools belong to our community, to our parents, our teachers, and most of all, our children. Over the past five years, a few years, we have seen growing frustration among parents and residents. Many feel their voices are not being heard, that decisions are being made behind closed doors, and that priorities have shifted away from what truly matters, our student education and well-being. I'm running to change that. I'm running to restore transparency, rebuild the trust, and bring accountability back to the Board of Education. For far too long, a lack of transparency has been one of the biggest problems in our district. It has created confusion, frustration, and division among residents. And it didn't have to be this way. When discussions about the Bus DeBuu project were handled with limited public input, it raised serious concern about trust and priorities. What motivates me most is restoring transparency, accountability, and parent trust in our schools. Policies like 57, 56 have created confusion and division because they weren't clearly explained or openly discussed with parents, such as the following paragraph, and this paragraph is taken from NJEA's formal website. Paragraph E, a school district shall accept students as certain gender identity. Parental consent is not required. Not required. Paragraph B, nor is a legal or code order name change required. Paragraph C, there is no affirmative duty for any school district personnel to notify student parents or guardian of the student gender identity or expression. I believe every policy must protect students while also protect family rights to be informed and involved. We need open communication, common sense, and decisions based on what's best for our children, not outside pressure, politics, or any other agenda. I strongly believe education should focus on learning, not ideology, so our children can build knowledge, confidence, and character that lasts a lifetime. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the PTO for organizing tonight's forum. My name is Jackie Hedlund. I am a 10-year homeowner in Saraville and my family has been a resident in Saraville since 2005. I am a mother, an educator, a dues-paying member of NJEA, and hopefully your next board of ed member candidate, elected candidate. I am running on the forum of Purposeful Impact. That means leadership that is intentional, equitable, and student-centered. You'll find me in the third column, although I am candidate number seven. And my campaign is built around the power of seven, seven commitments that guide my work and reflect my values: purposeful impact, student-centered excellence, transparency, equity, support for educators, fiscal responsibility, and community partnership. As a dues-paying NJEA member, I'm deeply motivated to bridge any gaps between educators, administration, and the community. By profession, I am a student assistance counselor and clinician. And my perspective and passion to strengthen social-emotional learning and expand equitable access to all students that have neurodivergent, academic, or need any extracurricular activities is my main focus. Saraville has incredible educators and bright students who deserve continued investment in both their academic and emotional growth. Like many districts, we're seeing a rise in mental health needs, learning gaps, and educator burnout from increased class sizes and changing expectations. I want to help reimagine policies that prioritize the whole child while supporting academic achievement and emotional well-being, while also ensuring our educators feel valued, supported, and connected through strong resources that allow them to thrive. So when you vote, look for me in the third column. And remember, Purposeful Impact, I'm here for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. My name is Jeff Smith. And again, I'll reiterate what you said. Thanks to the middle school PTO for putting this together for the second year in a row. This forum wasn't around the first time I ran, and I think it's a great service to the community for everybody to get the opportunity to hear us speak and kind of what we all stand for. I've been a Saraville resident for 10 years now, and I have one child left in the Saraville school system, and she's a freshman in the War Memorial High School right now. I am the vice president of the Board of Education, and I'm proud of that role that I've had this year in that position. And this is my first term on the Board of Education. I originally ran for the Board of Education because I became very involved in the community when they wanted to put a transportation complex at the Slover preschool in the Morgan section of town. And we rallied residents. We brought them to Board of Education meetings. We had discussions with the administration and drove change. And that inspired me to run for the board because I want to continue to drive change in this town. I'm proud that in the past three years, we have been fiscally responsible enough to not raise the school budget more than 2% a year, not even hitting the 2.5% for what the state allows us to do. We've also luckily, because it was voted for, had a referendum to put new environmental systems in the schools, windows, roofs, HVAC systems. And I'm proud to say, serving on the finance committee and working directly on that project, we've completed it within the three years that I've been on the Board of Education. And with the exception of the Slover preschool, every school started this year with a new HVAC system. That is going to offer tremendous benefits to our educators and to our students. We saw great examples of what that could do this year in some of the summer academies we hold at the middle school. For the first year ever, we had air conditioning in the classroom. We had the highest level of attendance for the summer academies. We had the lowest incidence of discipline problems in the summer academies. And the teachers and the administrators will directly attribute that to the kids being comfortable and not falling asleep and sweating in the classroom. So it's one of the things I'm most proud of. The other thing that we've done a lot of in the three years here, and Lucy talked about it, we are among the safest schools in the state of New Jersey. Now, when your child gets on a bus in Saraville, they scan an ID. So from the moment your child gets on a bus in Saraville till they get off the bus to get home, you know where they are, the school knows where they are, and they can remain that much safer because we know where they are. The safety of the kids has been a big priority of myself in the current Board of Education, and I would like the opportunity to continue with that. We still have work we need to do on test scores. We still have work we need to do on in the classroom. But I do believe we're providing every resource we can as a Board of Education to the staff and to the administration to allow them to do their job. I'm in column one with Lucy and Chris Callahan this year. I hope I get your vote, and I look forward to your questions tonight. Thanks.
Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jessica Vance. I am a mom of a third grader here at Arlen. I am a stepmom to a recent Saraville War Memorial High graduate who is here tonight from 2025. I have been a Realtor for 18 years in New Jersey. During that time, I have worked with many different families and different people, different cultures. I have sold over $70 million in real estate, and I have developed a reputation of integrity and honesty. I'm very straightforward, and I think that people really appreciate that. People trust me with handling one of the largest, if not the largest, purchase and sale of their lifetime, and I take that very seriously. When I'm working in my profession, I have a fiduciary responsibility to my clients, which means that I need to put their needs above my own. I would take that principle and apply that for our children of this district if I was serving on the board. I would put their needs above my own for the children in the community. I use problem-solving skills and creativity when it comes to the many unique challenges that we face when we're purchasing and selling homes. A lot of different challenges arise, and every situation is very unique. This includes analyzing data to spot trends, collaborating with professionals, and working as a team with other agents and attorneys during the negotiating process and all the way to closing. Now, you may wonder how you can apply this to working on the board. Well, I think it's really important to work as a team and also collaborate with others when there may be situations that are sometimes adversarial. When you're working as an agent representing a buyer and representing a seller, sometimes emotions get in the way. People don't always agree. We have to find some common ground and negotiate rather than just continue to butt heads. We have to figure things out, and we would need to do that for the children in this community. In addition to my career as a Realtor, I also have served as a substitute teacher in our district for the last two years. During that time, I have been able to get hands-on experience and gain insight into the district operations on a day-to-day basis. I have also had the pleasure of working with our multiple disabilities classes at Arlen. Many of you may not know, but we have a lot of children in our multiple disabilities program that are in a lot of need. And it was a pleasure to work with these students. And the only reason I'm not right now is because I'm running for the board, and it is a conflict. As a mother and a taxpayer, I'm running because I care deeply about the future of our community, about the future of our education, and making sure that our tax dollars are properly spent. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kelly Wayne Taylor. I first want to thank the PTO for setting this up. I want to thank you all for coming out and showing interest in this and engaging with us and giving us questions that we can directly answer to you guys. I want to thank everybody on this table, on these two tables, because I know that this is not easy to do, to step up and do this. And so thank you again for running again and to us who have stepped up for the first time. I am a lifelong resident of Saraville. I have also gone through the school system myself. I graduated from this school in 1994. I'm a mother of five, and all of them have gone through the school system here in Saraville. Two of them have used the special education services. They're special education students. So you'll hear me talk a lot about the special educations, kind of my heart. That's my soft spot, is for the special education department. The values, I want to talk about the values because a lot of time we're getting asked about, what does the values mean in your name, in your slogan? So I like to think of it as more than just Saraville's values, but human values. And those would be communication. It's number one for me. I'm going to talk about that all the time for every single subject that we deal with. Communication is key. In that communication, we're not always going to agree with each other. That just means we are free thinkers, and that's okay. It's okay to have disagreements, but we have to do it respectfully with each other. Our kids are watching these meetings, and our kids are watching us, how we behave at these meetings. And we should be setting good examples for them on how to resolve differences. And the reason why I'm running is because I see a vision of the Board of Education. I see everyone working together, the board, the teachers, the parents, working together as a team. I feel like that would be the best, most strong support system for our kids when we're a team and backing them with whatever it is that they're going to need. And that is it. Mine is short and sweet, so thank you again.
Thank you all. At this time, we will move into our question section of the night. Again, if you want to ask any additional questions, you need to do so by getting a raffle ticket. So when I do call your number, if that is your raffle ticket, one of the team will bring a mic, and you can feel free to ask your question. Each candidate will then respond. They have two minutes to respond to your question. All right, so if your ticket number, 639, 639 at the end, if you'd raise your hand, we will get you a mic. 639.
Well, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate all of the efforts that people put into helping our children to become educated and to learn the things that they need to grow up and be good citizens. And I have a granddaughter in the school system. I have a grandson in the school system. And I'm a person who thinks in common sense terms. To me, common sense is not allowing boys into girls' locker rooms. And I'm particularly concerned about my granddaughter. Or not letting boys into girls' sports. If I were to vote for you and you were in office as the Board of Education member, would you advocate for a policy that would get boys and forbid boys from going into girls' locker rooms and forbid boys to be in girls' sports?
Thanks for the question. We all start with Lucy and then move the mic down.
Okay, green light, here we go. At this time, we don't have any issues with that in this district. However, anything that is related to sports would be dictated by the County Association of Athletics. We would probably do our best to provide alternative areas if we needed to, but right now, we don't have an issue with that. But again, anything related to boys playing on girls' teams and girls playing on boys' teams, that would come from the state and the county athletic association.
Once again, my concern is policy 57, 56. This policy is not mandate, is not a law, and is not open for public, like not many people. I have, when I was conveying, I talked to many people. Nobody is aware of that 57, 56. And currently, in Saraville, there is no policy that protects girls from transgender boys. There is no such thing. So if I get elected, definitely, I'm going to vote to ban this policy. This policy is not rescinded or is going to be reformed in a way that is going to help the kids, help the children, have all of them safe.
Good evening and thank you for your question. I will echo the sentiments of Ms. Bloom. Currently, any district will need to follow whatever Middlesex County or the state puts out regarding sporting guidelines, but there are concerns that come up in the future. If there is a change in policy, if elected, we have to address that as a board, but currently, we would have to follow anything that is in place. Thank you.
I'll just kind of echo the statement. Right now, the state of New Jersey is very clear on it. As a sworn member of the Board of Education, the first thing I did in January when I swore myself into the Board of Education was swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey. I can't, nor will I, ever pass a policy that violates state law in the state of New Jersey. It's my opinion. I have my opinion on what I think is right and wrong, but I swore an oath to the state of New Jersey to uphold the laws of the state of New Jersey. 57, 56 doesn't really deal with athletics, so I think that can be addressed someplace else. I'm just going to stick to your athletics question. It's beyond the Board of Education. That's really a question you need to ask your state assembly and state senators as to why they don't change it. Because until they change it, we can't do anything about it. Thank you.
So right now, as it stands, Title IX is what is protecting girls from biological men being in girls' sports at the federal level. Now, New Jersey has a different interpretation of Title IX. That may change if we get a new governor. Right now, as it stands, New Jersey does have NJLAD, which is the law against discrimination. So yes, 57, 56 is not part of that. But the way that New Jersey's laws are interpreted is that we must allow children to use the facilities of whatever gender that they feel that they identify with. Now, again, that's going to be up for decision because it directly conflicts with Title IX of the federal law. And there is something that we can do about it. Over in Coltsneck, I have a letter here that is actually from the president dated on September 22. And in this letter, he is thanking Coltsneck for coming up with a resolution that states that they will make sure that they preserve the safety of biological women and not allow transgender women into their sports. So there is something that we could do. I think that it would be something that would be open for discussion, and we would have to talk to our board attorney and see what kind of legal implications it would have on us as a board. But to say that there is nothing we can do is not true because Coltsneck just did it. And right now, in one of the lines in the letter here that is from Donald Trump to the Coltsneck superintendent, it says, "Any school, college, or athletic association that fails to comply will lose access to federal funding." So New Jersey is on the radar. We may start to lose federal funding if we're not complying with federal law. Now, at the same time, we have to also honor the laws of our state. So there is a conflict, but that's something that we can talk to the attorney about.
I want to echo what everyone else has said. With the way that the laws are written right now, we can't change the sharing of the restrooms, and we can't change the males in female sports. But for transparency's sake, if I'm ever given the opportunity, if I make it to the board and I'm sitting there and it comes across for a vote, my vote will be no. They cannot share restrooms, and they cannot have males in female sports, and they cannot share locker rooms.
Next question will be from number 643. Last three digits, 643.
So thank you guys for coming. The question is for everyone in the board, but especially for the board members that are there currently. but especially for the board members that are there currently. So Mr. Smith said that he was proud of the fact that in the past three years, I believe, that they haven't gone above 2.6%?
2.5.
Say again?
2.5.
2.5. In 2023, '24, Saraville took the extra money that was allowed in, allowed in, allowed in, allowed by the state of New Jersey, up to 5.23%. In 2022, you guys pushed a referendum for $97 million to do all the construction and all the business processes that you've been doing. Now, some of those things absolutely needed. At the same time, though, the board voted, and they spent millions on buses that you already had a busing company that you didn't need to spend money on for buses. And you also spent millions of dollars on solar panels right out in the parking lot and in other schools that still aren't functional, that the taxpayers paid money for. You spent a lot of tax money that could have gone into hiring teachers and paying teachers better. And I was at the board meeting last night, and I listened to what was said about our grades and how 54% achieved what the state level is, which means that 46% haven't. And I know there were all kinds of discussions about ESL's second language and learning disabilities. But that could have been money that you guys spent for teachers, for the ESL children, and for the learning disability children. I look at that as a major misspent of money. Even now, and I don't know that there's way back from that. You guys already purchased it. So I would like to hear about fiscal responsibility because talking to, and what you all have to say about that, because talking to people in Saraville, they're upset at how much their taxes have gone up. They're not thinking, hey, it's only gone up 2.6% or 2.5%. It's a far different perspective for the people who live in Saraville. So I leave that with all of you just to answer now. Thank you.
We'll start with Kelly for this one.
So I will speak on this as a resident and a parent in Saraville because I'm not privy to the budgets, how they work, if there are certain amounts in certain accounts that can't be touched for certain things or if it's allocated like that. If I get elected to the board, I'm sure to learn it quickly. I'm a pretty quick learner. But speaking as a resident and parent, I feel that there has been a lot of money spent without prioritizing where it really needs to be spent. I'll go back to the special education again. I feel that the paras, the paraprofessionals that work with our special needs kids are the hardest workers and have the toughest jobs in this school. And they're at the bottom of the barrel. And I've looked at salaries. I've looked at things that just don't make sense. So why would you cut an hour or a half hour of their time just so that they can't make benefits? I feel like a lot of money could have been invested in our teachers, and a lot of money could have been invested in our paras, and a lot of other things. You know, we spend a lot of money. There's electric signage, which is beautiful. But do we really need it right now? Is it something that could have waited? You know, could that money have gone to a better cause?
First of all, I agree with Kelly. I think that we should be investing in our students, in our faculty. Paras, definitely. I do believe that we have a revolving door when it comes to paras. So right now, we're paying them minimum wage. I think that you could go to Dunkin' Donuts and make the same amount as what we're offering paras. And these people are so crucial to the development and the help with our special needs students. I am a fiscally responsible person when it comes to my household. I do not spend beyond my means, and I think that we have done that here. We've heard the board say that they've stayed within budget and managed the budget very well. Well, of course, you stayed within budget, manage it well because we had $97 million added from the referendum. So who couldn't work within that budget? I think that it was not wise to go into major projects during a bunch around the same time period. Like discussed, we talked about the referendum, the bus depot. And then on top of it, we had bus depot litigation. And that was hitting the taxpayers from both sides. So that goes back to what I was saying in my job as a Realtor, that you have to sometimes reach out to your counterparts and say, hey, how could we work this out? You know, how could we make this happen and get this deal done and satisfy everybody? If our superintendent and our mayor were not agreeing and not seeing eye to eye, well, then maybe the board members should be reaching out to their counterparts and saying, how could we make this happen? Instead of wasting everybody's tax dollars on both sides with litigation. Another thing that I saw that a couple meetings ago that I wasn't happy about was a $700,000 change order because somebody forgot to put one of the locker rooms in the blueprints that was made up in the plans. So, you know, that's a huge amount of money. And even though we're talking about pennies from $97 million, that's still $700,000. Dr. Labby talked about the middle school digital sign costing $50,000 to just wire it. Now, I know how much it costs because my husband is an electrician. So, you know, it's ridiculous that we're spending money on vanity projects like light-up signs when our test scores are in the tanks and we're saying that we can only have paras here for 29 and a half hours. So I think that we need to make spending a priority on our teachers, our students. One of the other things is back in 2017, Dr. Labby had mentioned block scheduling and then said, we're not going to do it because it costs too much. But we're spending money on all these other things when that could actually help our academics.
Thanks for the question. I'll try to address all of it here. As far as what you were saying about board members reaching out to the council and the mayor. Ms. Bloom and myself have emailed the council president and the mayor oh, at least a dozen times in the past several months to speak about working together to work on how pilots can involve the school district. And we have heard nothing back from the council. The mayor of this town stood up when he was sworn into office and said, "I will never work with the Board of Education." As far as the referendum, the referendum was advertised. The referendum went to a vote. The referendum passed. The referendum budgeted a certain amount of money that could only be used for what was specified in that referendum. And we did. We put new environmental systems in all the schools, which added air conditioning. It added better filtration. It added better energy-efficient windows. It added better energy-efficient roofing that will, in the long run, save the district money. The solar panels are operational at several of the schools. They're not operational here at the high school. And the, sorry. The solar panels were done with a company that installed the solar panels, and we see the benefit in the kilowatt hours. They absorb the cost of installing the solar panels. So I don't see how that was fiscally irresponsible either. Bringing buses in-house to the district. I remember when my stepson was in school here and we were contracting buses. Buses not showing up. Buses getting lost around town. Buses driving with a child still in it at the end of the day. I'm not okay with that. When we bring transportation in-house, we are accountable. Our employees are accountable. Our director of transportation is accountable to make sure those buses get to the stop, to make sure that the stops are laid out in a logical way, to make sure each child is safe. To now be ID-checked on the bus so you know if your child got on the bus and if your child got off the bus and if your child got on the right bus. That doesn't happen when you have a subcontractor. We have our own maintenance department. We have our own Saraville employees that are responsible for keeping those buses safe. I'm not going to outsource that. That just makes sense to me to have in-house to make it safer for our students. So I do think we are being fiscally responsible. As far as paying teachers better, paying paras better, I don't disagree with you. I come from a family of teachers. But we operate within a contract that was agreed to and voted on by the membership of the SEA that was negotiated with the Board of Education. In next year, that contract will be up. We will negotiate with the SEA. Whatever terms we come to will be how we operate for the next three years. We can't just decide today that we want to change somebody's salary within the contract. It doesn't work like that.
Time.
So, thank you.
Hello. Thank you for your question. I'm just going to preface this. I'm speaking as an individual, and whatever I say does not reflect the opinions of you or any organization or district I may be affiliated with. I'm going to speak on a personal note about the busing. As someone who, as a teenager going to high school where buses were contracted, the bus was late. I was walking to school, and I ended up being hit by a minivan at 15 because the van did not see me while I was trying to cross the street. As the bus that was over a half hour late, I was walking to school, was like, sorry, are you going to so-and-so high school? And I said, yes. And as I was crossing, I ended up being injured. Thankfully, the assistant super and everyone came, and it caused a little bit of concern, obviously, and I was injured. But I will say, I do find, and I take great pride in knowing that Saraville does have their own busing so that when my child does start school in Saraville in a few years, I know that they're going to be safe. So I just want to thank you guys for that because it is an issue. And in other districts that I've worked in, having buses not show up, get broken down, or it is a real fact that students get left on a bus, or you have our students that are disabled in wheelchairs if the lift is not working, that is a huge concern. So I just want to thank you guys for that. In terms of fiscal responsibility, I work for a school district, and I worry about my job. You know, it is a real thing. State aid and funding is a huge issue. We have to look at our budgets. I do think every district can benefit from a forensic audit. Now, I don't understand that comes at a cost, but I do believe that cost of a forensic audit could be useful spending so that we could leverage to see where we can cut in certain areas and restructure elsewhere to service our students and maybe find money to pay our educators. As previously stated, budgets are impacting every district. I'm in education, and I do worry about my role. If elected as a Board of Ed member, I would call for fiscal transparency and try to see if we could follow the money that is currently being used. I believe in having community members, educators, and students. They deserve to have educators. We need to retain them. And we need to retain quality educators by competitive salaries and ongoing professional development. We still need to invest in technology and infrastructure and make sure that every classroom is up to date with HVAC, has 21st century components for learning, including but not limited to making sure that we're keeping up with the times. AI is a real thing. Can University just release a degree in AI? Other districts are seeing how we can use that. That does come at a cost, but that is something that's very real and necessary for our students. Also, making sure that we're leveraging different career and technology, education field experiences, which would also cost a little bit more money, but necessary. We also need to make sure while we're being fiscally responsible with budgets that we're reducing class sizes if possible and making sure that we have individualized attention for our neurodivergent students, to make sure that we have paraprofessionals, LDTs, child study team members that could help our students of that increasing population. So that is my answer for that fiscal responsibility. But I do want to just reassure you guys that it is, I think everyone that is currently on the board is doing their best. And I do believe that, you know, SEA and the board that is elected will do their best to come to the table to work together so that we retain quality teachers and paraprofessionals and all educators across the board in Saraville. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Very good question. My financial priorities center on investing in what truly strengthens our children's education. A solid, age-appropriate curriculum that builds strong foundation in reading, writing, math, and science. We need to focus our resources on programs that directly help students learn and advance, not on topics or agenda or assets like bus depot or such this stuff that don't contribute to their academic growth at early stages. Our goal should be to give every child the tools to think critically, solve problems, and prepare the rear world success that includes the smaller class sizes where needed. Improved classroom technology and strong teacher support all while keeping spending responsible and avoiding property tax increase. I believe education should focus on learning, not ideology or not on assets, so our children can build knowledge, confidence, and characters that last lifetime. I worked 20 years, even more than 20 years, in transportation. I have my own business. It's good to have buses, but to have 75 buses at one shot, that's too big. That, of course, is going to make a big problem for the budget, for that year especially. And having all these buses without any garage depot, I do not know how they maintain these buses currently. That's a big problem. That's another problem. And regarding the accidents that happen because we don't have our buses or we have another bus, I know that there is an electric bus that had burned it down. I don't remember where, but the bus burned it down. That doesn't mean that school district is responsible for this one. So I think we should focus more on kids first, on the children's education, on teachers, much more than anything else. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's start with the buses. We can't get our kids to school if we don't have buses. And having been in this town over 53 years, both of my sons attended this school. They were walkers. Now, it's two and a half miles. Then, it was only a mile. However, when we had contracted buses, we found that, as was said previously, sometimes the buses didn't show up. Sometimes the drivers didn't know where they were going. There was one incident where we had to send the police out to find a busload of elementary school kids because the driver was lost. We have phased in the buses over the last several years because we knew that if we had our own buses and we had our own drivers, we could guarantee that your children were picked up and that your children were safe. We have the scan in, once again, for that purpose, to keep your children safe so they don't know where they are. The other piece was that after COVID, a lot of bus companies were raising their prices. They were basically gouging us. So we had no recourse. But to start adding to our fleet so that we could have a complete fleet and not have to contract out. Now, I know on occasion, we still have to do that for certain athletic events because our buses are busy taking kids home from school, and we need buses for athletic events. But that's a different issue. The solar panels, okay. Again, to help reduce the taxpayers' burden, the solar panels were installed so that we could be efficient with our spending. However, we ran into an issue with one of the vendors, and we're working through that. Paraprofessionals. I always told them they were my favorite people. They work very hard. We all know that. They work with a special group of kids that need special attention. However, their salary is negotiated. However, their salary is negotiated by the Education Association, not by the board. When we contract with the SEA, we give them a percentage and we always keep to the general percentages that are used throughout the state, throughout the county, okay? It is up to the SEA how they disperse that money, where they put it on the guide and where they put it with the other areas of staff that work under the SEA. The referendum, okay? The referendum, again, as was said before, anything that was in the referendum is referendum approved. So when we have a change order, again, it was an oversight, somebody missed a locker room in the planning, I blame the engineering company and the architects. However, the money is there. We've saved money in other areas, so the money is still there. It is still the referendum money. No additional money is being added to that cost. And as far as adding other things for the kids that are not college-bound or career-bound, spending money on that, we have one of the, when I taught here, we had three art teachers. We now have six. We have robotics, we have digital art, we still have auto tech, don't get me started on the fence. We still have auto tech, we have technical drafting, we have all kinds of things that can assist the kids in other directions if they're not college-bound. And last year, New Jersey School Boards Association went in that direction stating that is now not only, we are not only preparing our kids for college, but we are preparing them for college and careers. So we are doing the best that we can with what we have and we thank you.
Thank you. The next question, the last three digits, six, three, five.
Thank you all for coming tonight and answering all our questions. I heard in the beginning, you're talking about safety, fiscal responsibility and special education. That's what I heard. And I also heard one prospective member sit, talk about Title IX and Policy 5756 and how Title IX is part of federal funding and how the Trump administration will take away some federal funding if we're not compliant with their definition of Title IX. But I'd like to address the safety issue first and I thank you for the people who defended to have the buses from an outside company because that is important. And I really liked your passion about how safety was important. I would only hope that you would have the same passion about the safety of our girl athletes in the locker room because that is something that's dear to my heart as a former coach here of girls. Fiscal responsibility, be by being non-compliant with Title IX, federal funding for special ed is affected. For low-income communities, it's affected. That's Title I and the idea IDEA for special ed. So that's a danger if we were to lose our funding for that. Hopefully, you'll do something that removes that funding. The only other thing I want to mention that was, I heard, was that for the parents, maybe more money, that it's up to the union. Well, I was a negotiator for the union for two contracts and I learned one valuable lesson. It's the golden rule. Whoever has the gold makes the rules. So they get to tell us where we can put the money as well. It's a team effort, hopefully, back and forth. So I would suggest the board say that to the union. You need that. And I know as a negotiator, I would have to react to that. The answer I hear about Policy 5756 is it's not our fault, it's the state rule. Well, now we have a federal law that they want to push. So you're losing funding or is the NJLAD? Well, they can change your mind too. Well, how do they change your mind? It's very simple. The district votes against Policy 5756. It sends a message. Oh, that means the people want a change. So we have districts like Colson that are doing that. They're sending the message. So we don't have to wait for a new governor. We have to wait for people to make the governor vote the right way. So what I'm asking, I know there's a question here somewhere. The question is, what will you do? Will you vote it down to send that message? Will you personally, as a board, write a letter to the state and say, "This is not a good idea. We don't want to lose the funding. We don't want to go to a court." Will you do that? So that's my question. My question is, will you be an advocate for changing the policy so that we do not lose funding?
We'll start with Lucy.
Okay, Steve, 5756 has nothing to do with locker rooms or athletes. Okay, 50, I'm going to read to you a law that I just picked up about six weeks ago at a legal forum that I attended. Platten versus Middletown Board of Education, appellate division. Upheld the injunction blocking the school district from implementing policies viewed as forcibly outing transgender, non-binary and gender diverse students to their parents. The court concluded at this stage that such provisions likely violate the NJLAD and would have caused irreparable harm to transgender and gender diverse students by forcing them to come out before they were ready, putting their safety and well-being at risk. Although parents have the right to control their child's upbringing, case law from the United States Supreme Court, the Third Court and New Jersey has not extended this right to require schools to affirmatively provide parents with information. Now, we stated this again at a previous meeting when this came up about 5756, that it doesn't say that the staff will not inform the parents. It says that they may not. And we talked about having counseling and mental health. We have all of that for our kids. So I'm proud to say that we have had no issues with this at this time. However...
At this time, I just want to make sure that it's clear what you said. At this vote.
At this time, okay? So what we're doing here is we're crying wolf before we need to, okay? You are assuming, you are assuming...
Just a reminder, it's questions only. Lucy, Lucy, just one second, please. Just a reminder that it's not a debate. We're asking the questions, but we're not about the responses.
I just want to know what may not mean. Legally, it means may not.
You are, from what I'm getting from you is that you are basing your assumption on the fact that if a transgender male goes into a female locker room, those girls are going to be at risk. How can you possibly say that? You're a former teacher. You know what I know. These kids are timid, they don't want to be the center of attention, they want to be safe like everybody else. No one child is going to create a problem for themselves that will make their situation worse. And that is my personal opinion.
Thank you. Great question again. This is policies 5756, printed from NJ.gov, so that's the standard. It's a policy, it's not a law. What the law she mentioned is fine, is good. That is a law of New Jersey. But the policy is something different. It's not mandated. It's recommended to look in the guidelines and adopt what you need in your district. And what happened in New Jersey, 70, about 70 district left 5756. Why? Because they get a lot of lawsuits and a lot of problem with the kids and nothing happened for them. I do not know why in Saraville, we're keeping this policy since many years. I attend the Board of Education, I see families, I see parents complaining about this policy. Do we need to wait until we get a problem with the kids, with a locker room, sport train, trains or anything like that in order to change it or to reset it? We don't need that. Thank you.
It's me again. Jackie Hetham, speaking as an individual, my opinion. I'm just going to ask that you guys don't boo me because I'm not going to be very popular with my response, but as a New Jersey educator, I stand firmly in support of New Jersey DOE policy 5756. It is not about sports. However, I will go into the reason for my support. This is not only a policy in my own district, but also in Saraville and I hope it remains in place. As a former GSA advisor who proudly led the district, my former district's first ever pride flag raising, which has now become an annual tradition, I've seen firsthand the courts are protecting our students. This policy ensures and promotes safety, not secrecy. I emphasize that some may feel this policy may infringe on parental rights, but I can assure you, that is simply not the case. As a counselor, I work with students and families daily. When a student chooses not to immediately share something with a parent, there is usually a reason, it is often a matter of emotional or physical safety. Most times, we're able to reach a point where the student feels empowered to advocate for themselves and open up, and I facilitate them in that process. But if not, that is also their right and it's our responsibility as educators to support them through that. This is not about keeping secrets, it's about providing a safe, equitable environment, which is our duty and as a community member, I strongly believe in. If we remove this protection, we're actively making the school unsafe, an unsafe place for some and most, and our most vulnerable students and possibly other members of their family. Policy 5756 protects students and it upholds the moral responsibility we carry as educators to service all children. I do not condone students coming to school in fear of not being supported. I also don't think any parent or guardian should fear their child won't be supported in Saraville schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to address the concern that somehow we're taking away parents' rights with 5756. I think that accusation is just downright preposterous. The board and this policy have never taken away a parent's right to talk to their child, to ask how their child is doing, to shop for clothing with their child, to ask about their child's friends, to talk to their child about sex, religion, culture or anything else. We have never taken away a right of a parent to observe their child, to invite their child's friends over or to take their child to church. We also do and need to continue to create a safe space for all children in the district, regardless of race, religion, gender, sexuality or anything else. If a child only feels safe coming out to a teacher, nurse, guidance counselor, administrator, then I am glad we have this policy in place for these children. If a child at this very difficult moment does not feel like they can come out to their family, but rather come out to school, then thank God we've created that trusting space. I hope every parent creates a safe, loving, nurturing environment for their kids. Every child deserves that, no matter what life may throw their way. By taking away this policy, we're not doing anything for parental rights, but instead we're dehumanizing and making a very, very, very minority community feel invisible. We have seen it time and time again, what can happen when someone feels like they're invisible at school and trust me, it's not a good thing what happens. I will never make anyone in the LGBTQ plus community feel dehumanized or invisible. I'm here to make sure every child is safe. That includes my stepdaughter, who's a soccer player here in school. I'm going to make sure she's safe at school, but I'm going to almost make sure every child is safe at school. Thank you.
So number one, Policy 5756 is not mandatory. It is not law, it is not the same as NJLAD. New Jersey School Board Association says that policies that are created must be consistent. And this policy is not consistent for the very fact that it says the school may inform the parent, so they may or may not. That's not consistent across the board. People on this board who are refusing to overturn Policy 5756 are saying that it could be discriminatory. Well, that's actually the reason that the state attorney, state attorney general Clinton actually went after Middletown is because they revised the policy and they rewrote it. When the court case that Lucy is referencing came to the judge, Attorney General Clinton had to come out and admit that the policy is not mandatory. So Middletown and the other cities that were part of the lawsuit just dropped the policy. They repealed it. So when people ask, can you replace it? That's where you run into legal trouble because if they interpret as the new policy as discriminatory, then we can run into a lawsuit. Now, as far as being discriminatory, one of the major problems that I have with Policy 5756 is that the board here has been complacent with discriminatory remarks from one of their sitting board members. If you go back a few meetings ago from, I believe it was the spring, one of the board members, after a parent in the audience spoke, said, "The guy was talking about the Bible and how there are two sexes, you're sending that kid home to him?" That's exactly my point. What would he do to that child? That is discrimination against any Christian or Catholic or Bible believing person who believes in two sexes. And for them to make that assumption that the board has the authority to assume and evaluate parental fitness based on their religious beliefs is discriminatory. So for that reason, I think that it needs to be repealed. One of the other major things that I also noticed is that last year, the National Educators Association sent out a survey to 3,000 of their members. And one of the questions that they asked is, "What is the most challenging things that you're facing right now and students are facing?" And the most challenging thing that they're facing is mental health issues. And then they went further and they said, "Well, why?" And number one was parental communication. So if we have a student that is dealing with mental health issues or any kind of mental anguish, we should not be withholding any information from the parent. The parent needs to be involved and that is how you protect the child, not by withholding information.
So part of 5756 writes that there could be a separate file created that uses the child's preferred pronouns and preferred name. It could be kept from the parent if the child requests. That is in direct violation of FERBA laws, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, which gives the parental rights here are the right to inspect and review records at any time, with the exception of safety or abuse concerns, not comfortability. Safety and abuse, there's a difference here. If there's a case of safety and abuse concerns, a mandated report needs to be made to the appropriate authorities. There's also a limited confidentiality in cases of active custody or court orders. We understand that there are cases where a child's specific sexual orientation or gender identity comes out and it could cause them danger. We don't, we don't want that to happen. So we're... So we're not, you know, for that. But to keep parents out of the loop, that's why, to answer your question, Mr. Fisher, I will vote to rescind the policy because parents are number one. And I understand that, you know, when you have a trusted adult in a school, that's wonderful, but I think that we have, I think we're up to about four now, people who were once trusted adults in this district who have been accused or convicted of sexual misconduct when it comes to our students. So, that being said, that's why I think it creates a slippery slope when you're talking about someone's sexual, a child's sexual orientation or gender identity is nobody's business, except theirs.
Thank you. The next question will come from last three digits, 642.
Thank you all for being here. At the last board meeting, it was revealed that 54% of our students are meeting language arts standards, and only 39% are meeting the math standards according to test scores. Our superintendent made what I believe are racist statements, saying that the demographics of certain student groups, including immigrants and lower-income families, were the cause of those lower test scores. So I'd like to know, and by the way, I think if President Trump had said that, you'd probably be burning him in epigee right now. So I'd like to know, number one, will you disavow Dr. Labby's statement? Number two, do you think that test scores are an implication of the board's performance? And what do you think that the current board should have done to affect better outcomes for those scores?
So this is one of those areas that I'm not all that educated in when it comes to the scores, things like that. I know that what I would do, if it were me, I couldn't speak for the board here now, but if I were on the board, I would wanna see things like what other districts are doing to succeed, you know, how they're succeeding, how they're achieving. Another thing that could be done is to question alumni. How are their success rates, you know, after school, after college, college life? How are they succeeding? Asking, again, communication. How are the kids doing? Are they struggling? Ask the parents, how are the kids doing? How are you doing? It's all about communication, seeing what everybody needs, and providing the tools that everyone needs, and investing in that.
So yes, academic performance is a huge concern for the district. It's a huge concern for me as a mother to a third grader. I wanna make sure that her and her peers get a very high-quality education. We cannot blame the education on minority groups or underprivileged children. It is the job of the educators to make sure that they are delivering a high-quality education to everybody across the board. And in our town, 39, almost 40%, are considered economically disadvantaged. So does that mean that we're not gonna rely on 39 to 40% of our students to pass? No, absolutely not. We have to look at what we're doing and how we can help those students. One of those things that I was talking about is back in 2017, there were all of these talks about going into block scheduling for the high school. I believe it was tested, and then all of a sudden it was dropped and said, "Well, we can't afford it, it would cost too much, we have to hire more teachers." That could be something that could really help these students, where they would be in class a little bit longer, and they'd have a chance to listen to a lecture and then go ahead and do the work, or break off into teams and do work. I think that we need to look at what hasn't worked and try something different. Some of the board members have been on this board for a long time. The test scores have not moved much. So if we keep doing the same thing, we're going to get the same results. One of the things that I noticed when looking at the data is that the math test scores drop off tremendously when you get to about sixth grade. One of the things that I discussed with teachers just yesterday is that in the elementary schools, we have standards-based grades, which means that when the grades come home, it says AS, MS, or I believe ES, approaching, meeting, or exceeding standards. And then when they get to sixth grade, now they're back to percentage-based grading. That doesn't help us. You know, a percentage is gonna be more accurate than looking at a broad meeting standards. So I think that we really need to focus on sixth-grade math especially. This is something that's come up in multiple board meetings over the years. Dr. Labby has stressed the importance of fractions being something that is foundational for algebra. So what are we doing? What tools are we giving these teachers at this time for those crucial points that are pivotal? I think one of the things that we could also do that would cost us nothing is look at some cellphone restrictions or cellphone bans. We know how detrimental they are to mental health, to being able to focus, but yet we haven't taken that upon ourselves to do any kind of restriction or ban. Now, we put a survey out there into the community to see how parents felt about that. It was 50-50. A lot of parents are worried about safety, that's their number-one concern. And I think that if parents are worried about safety, then we need to address that concern too. There are definitely things that we could do as far as tech goes. Too much tech, probably not good at the younger years. We need to make sure that kids are able to do things the old-fashioned way and get back to the fundamentals.
It's an excellent question, and if you watched the board meeting last night, I had lots of questions to our administrative staff about test scores and what we are doing to fix them. The one thing that we realized with test scores is to look at the whole child and not just a test score on what their success is here in Saraville. Look at the outcomes, look at our SAT scores, look at what our kids are doing after high school, look at the colleges, look at the military careers, look at the business careers that our kids are getting after high school that are preparing. And it is true, we need to make changes, we need to adapt, we need to adjust curriculums, we need to try new things, because something isn't working. To that point, in last night's meeting, we agreed to put into place a new foundational literacy program for K through 3, new academies for K through 11 in ELA, a new curriculum for 6 through 8 in ELA, ESL academies for ELA, ESL series for English as a second-language learners, and possibly an ESL advisory committee with families that are not primary English speakers to help. In math, we're putting in a new pilot series for K through 6. We're putting in professional development for differentiated learning in grades 3 through 8. We're adding academies for grades K through 11. We're adding bilingual math classes. We're adding so much to the math, because what we've learned is, some of the English as a second language and bilingual students have a tough time with the state testing because so much of the math is literature-based. Numbers are universal, but the English language is not. So much so that the state of New Jersey, next year, they're piloting the test this year in the high school, is going to an adaptive testing system, which means when the child takes the test next year, the questions are gonna progress at the child's level. So it's gonna be a much truer indication of how the kid is doing. The state has finally realized that how we've been doing the testing, maybe it hasn't been so great.
Everything is changing in the world and going towards AI, and everything is easy, but learning comes from struggle. So if we can get hands-on experience and get students to be able to problem-solve, it will only help them with their problem-solving and critical thinking when they get out into the career world.
I think that when kids find something that they're interested in, they excel so well in whatever it is. And myself, same as Jess, well, not same as Jess, I did not go to college, I have a career in medicine. I wanna thank everyone again for coming out. I want you to keep in mind that this is, whoever you decide to vote for, I hope you decide to vote for Maine, I hope you decide to vote for Jess and Otte. I think that a change would be good for the Board of Education, fresh eyeballs, looking at everything. I do wanna say that I envision a welcoming Board of Education, somewhere where the community can come in and feel free and at ease to speak on whatever issues might concern them. I would love to see the kids get more involved in coming to the Board of Education meetings. We did have a Board of Education meeting not too long ago, I think within the year where the kids led, which I think was a great idea. I would like to see kids really lead though, and come in and speak, and let us know what's on your mind, what would you like to talk about, what can we address? I want the Board of Education to have an environment where parents can come in and speak, and not have to worry about, "How am I gonna look?", or "What are they gonna call me?", or "What are they gonna say about me if I go up to that microphone and say something?" We're not all going to agree. That's just the way of the world, and it's okay. And we can disagree respectfully, that's the main thing that we have to do, but I think that we have to keep lines of communication open between everybody. It's best for the kids. If you can imagine parents that are divorced, that just won't talk to each other, how does that benefit the kid? We can't be divorced people for our kids. We can't be, the mother is the Board of Education, and the father is the parents, and we're out of, can't do that. We have to come together, we have to work together for the benefit of the kids. Thank you very much.
So I decided to run because first of all, I wanted to get involved with my daughter's education. You can't just sit back and complain and say, "Oh, I don't like the testing, I don't like the teachers, I don't like this." To really make a change, you have to get involved. And when I started paying attention to some of the board meetings, I was not satisfied with what I was seeing. I wrote to the board, I wrote a few letters to them about how I felt, and I don't feel that things will change in the way that they stand now. So I decided to run, and if elected, Column 2 will bring a much-needed, fresh change with a fresh set of eyes. As Kelly said, we definitely respect open dialogue from the community. It's so important because if you elect us, we're representing you, we're representing our children, and we wanna create a culture and a climate at the board that is respected and that our children can live in. My daughter is my reason, and she is in third grade. We have 10 more years of her education in Saraville, and I wanna ensure that she is getting the best education possible, and I'm just not going to settle for less.
I'm running for my second term here in the Saraville Board of Education. Like I said, I'm vice president right now, I'd like to continue in that role. I feel like I got involved for all the right reasons, because I wanted to have change and I wanted to make my voice heard. I probably went in with a lot bigger ideas than what a Board of Education member is actually able to do, because I've learned it and I am starting to really embrace what we can do, whether it's working on budgeting, working in committees, working on governance, working on helping pass curriculums, helping give the tools necessary to the schools so that the teachers can do their jobs, so that we give the tools to our superintendent so he can hire the right administrators, the right curriculum writers, and those administrators in turn can go on and hire the correct teachers and the correct parents and the correct guidance counselors. I wanna continue on the path we're on. I think we're seeing progress in the past three years in curriculum development, in test scores, in fiscal responsibility, in getting our infrastructure updated in this district. Our schools are not new buildings. We haven't built a new school in Saraville in quite a while, but we're doing the infrastructure upgrades to keep our schools current, to keep them operational at 100%. There's still more we need to do, I wanna see those projects through, I wanna see some more projects through. We have our SEA negotiations coming up in the next three years. I think it's mission-critical that we continue the great relationship we have with the SEA and come to a terms with a new contract with them that's fair for them and fair for the taxpayers of Saraville. And I wanna finally break through and work with the borough in this town. Maybe after this election, if I'm re-elected, the council will reply to my emails, we can set up a meeting. We can talk about how the borough and the school can work together. We need to work together more than just the rec department using our facilities, the great working relationship we have with Saraville Police Department that puts an officer in every school every day. We need to get involved in the pilots that happen in this town. The money can't just be taken away from the school district, but in order to do that, we need to work with the borough, and I'm hopeful in the next three years, if I'm re-elected, I will be able to work with the borough. So again, I'm running again for a lot of the same reasons I ran for the first time. I wanna bring a community perspective to the Board of Education, and I do hope you vote Column 1, which is for myself, Lucy, and Chris Callahan. Thank you.
Thank you again to the PTO, to everyone here tonight for your time, your care, and your commitment to our community. Deciding to run was very scary for Pam, a very private person, but I don't do anything without purpose, intention, and the impact behind it, hence my slogan, "Purposeful Impact." I'm hoping to bring fresh eyes. I actually, full transparency, I voted for Lucy and for Mr. Smith, so I do, so, you know, maybe I decided to shake things up, but no, I feel that educators deserve a voice at the table, and I feel like at this point in my life, I can be what Saraville may need if you choose to vote for me. I have seven intents that I'm running on. Purposeful impact, making decisions grounded in student needs and long-term vision and not convenience. A student-centered approach for excellence, keeping students at the heart of every policy and program that we implement. Transparency and accountability, making sure that we have clear, consistent communication and responsible governance, which requires active listening on both ends, from the board and the community. A lot of times we are listening, but we're not really hearing each other. Equity and inclusion, ensuring all students have fair access to resources and opportunities. Support for our educators, empowering and respecting the professionals who shape our children's futures, because they know what they're doing, and we need to continue to empower them and pay them livable wages. Fiscal responsibility, being a thoughtful steward of taxpayer dollars while prioritizing our student success, and community partnership, building strong collaborative
And community partnership, building strong collaborative relationships among families, staff, and our community. As a clinician and educator, I know that academic growth and emotional health go hand-in-hand, you cannot expect students to thrive if they're overwhelmed, disconnected, or struggling silently. We also can't expect our teachers to teach if they're going through the same struggles. I want to be a voice of the board that looks at the whole picture, the whole child, the whole classroom, the whole educator, and our whole school community. That means reviewing policies through the lens of both achievement and wellbeing, ensuring that our classrooms remain safe, inclusive, and engaging spaces for all to learn. Saraville's a district with enormous potential, enormous accolades, and a community of educators who go above and beyond and families who care deeply about their students, their children, and we want to continue to make you guys proud. I believe we can face those challenges not by doing more with less, but by doing better with what we have. By listening, collaborating, keeping our focus where it belongs on our students and people who we serve. So, I hope that you vote for me, I'm in column three, Jacqueline Headlam, Purposeful Impact. Thank you.
Fiscal responsibility is another major concern. Families across Saraville are feeling the strain of higher costs and raising taxes. That's why I will stand firmly for smart budgeting, cutting unnecessary spending, and protecting taxpayer from property tax increases. Every dollar we spend should go directly towards improving classrooms, supporting teachers, and ensuring a safe, positive learning environment. And let's talk about parental involvement because no one knows a child better than their parents. Parents deserve to be informed, involved, and inspected, respected when it comes to decisions that affect their children's education and development. We can't build strong schools without strong partnership between parents and educators. If we want better outcomes for our children, we must focus on our core fundamentals, reading, writing, math, science, the real learning that shapes their future. We must stop spending time and money on distractions that do not strengthen their education, especially at early stage. Our students deserve strong foundation that gives them the skills and confidence to succeed in life. If elected, I will work to keep the budget transparent and accessible to every resident, focus on real learning, not political or social agenda, support teachers with the tools they need to succeed, protect parental rights, and ensure open communication, and finally, maintain quality education without raising taxes. This election isn't about politics, it's about our children's future. It's about building schools that teach knowledge, build character, and inspire success. So, tonight, I'm asking for your trust, your support, and your vote for me, for Jessica, for Kelly, vote column two. If you want transparency in our schools, vote column two. If you want parents back in control, vote column two. If you want to stop tax increase and see real result in our classroom, vote column two. Together, we can make Saraville schools stronger, stronger, smarter, and more united. Let's sustain for our kids, for our families, and for our future. Thank you, God bless you all, and God bless America.
Okay, last but not least. So, as you know, I've been here a long time and I would like to continue to serve this district. I feel I still have a lot to offer, even though I'm getting older by the minute. It's important, of course, that we give the students everything they need, but you cannot increase their educational learning if you don't increase taxes. Teacher salaries go up every year. You guys go to the grocery store, everything goes up every minute. The problem with the taxes is not the school. We understand that we're fifty-six percent of your tax bill. However, the problem here is the pilot programs that keep being approved in this district. A pilot was initially, initially put into place for commercial buildings because they do not generate students. When you have a borough council that approves residential units and gives that developer a pilot program, that is hurting you. When Riverton first came to this town, I was at their initial meeting and I asked the gentleman, how many students do you think are two thousand? At that time, it was two thousand, I don't know what it is now. Residential units were generated and he smiled and said, well, at all places in Georgia and in Florida, we had a thousand units and it only generated thirty-five students. And I looked at him and I smiled and I said, you have to know that I'm on the Board of Education and you know, and I know, that all of those surveys are never correct. Thirty-five students? I hardly think so. Empty nesters and retirees. And I said, oh, yes, I think the empty nesters and the retirees want to be here on the Raritan Bay, downwind from the garbage dump. But anyway, he said, we do give something to the school district, but I don't want to say how much. And I said, oh, I'm not shy, I'll say how much? One point nine million. We can't build one school for one point nine million. And the information is that that money is paid out over the duration of the pilot. So, if they get a twenty-year pilot or a thirty-year pilot on that development, we will never see the money. And he smiled and said, oh, well, that can be negotiated. And I thought, yeah, let's negotiate right now. So, that seems to be the big issue in this town, is the pilots. We are transparent, as I said, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to know where the money is being spent, come to the board meeting. We had over forty pages last night where every dime that is spent is written down so that you can see it, if your interest is where the money is going. I also know, Fred, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a little annoyed now. You said "stem" and you know what I'm going to say, right? It's no longer just "stem," it's "steam" because they have figured out that science, technology, and math are all very creative. So, therefore, we have art in me now, I'm so happy that we do have art. And we make an effort to give the kids everything that they need. It's easy to sit here and say, elect me and I will change everything. Ladies and gentlemen, it doesn't work that way. Jeff found out, I found out. We are governed by laws, resolutions, policies, procedures, bylaws, statutes, regulatory and authoritative. We cannot change things overnight. We can do our best to change what we think needs to be changed. And again, that's why there are nine members of the board so that if we disagree, majority rules. But I can guarantee you that no matter who you vote for, we can only hope that the best interests of your children are at heart. I know mine certainly are. My grandchildren are in this district. As I said before, my son's graduated from the school. I have four grandchildren coming up in various schools in the district. So, I'm invested, I've been invested for a very long time and I hope you will vote for me again so that I can continue doing the work for you. Thank you.
I need to clear my head together for all of the people here. I really would like to thank you to everyone for coming out and want to really thank each of you and I thank all the PTO board members who hung in there to the very end. And then I will say, we're encouraged, we're encouraged. You know, I sat here as a Saraville resident with students and the community, whether you agree or don't agree, I think the way we conducted ourselves, the way we spoke up to what our points was, I mean, isn't that what it is? Isn't that the human beings that we're trying to grow? So, I would really encourage with tonight and again, just thank you from the bottom of our hearts and may the best candidate win. Good night, everybody.